I happen to look them up.
Lead order and say the pledge, please.
Let's believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing we have tonight is the consent agenda. I want to approve the consent agenda presented. Second. The second roll call, Mary.
Hank?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Any other public comment tonight? I'm just here to listen. Okay, hearing none, we'll go into our first business item, Resolution 2020-05, a resolution to enter into joint powers agreement for construction and acquisition of the sewer system and resolution of necessity to borrow by issuance of promissory note pursuant to SDCL 925-12.
This was developed by Nate in coordination with Attorney Meyer Henry of the school and Toby Morris to come up with a funding package for the sanitary, for the R oversizing portion of the sanitary sewer line coming out of the school. So that can be built out to full capacity, sort of the largest basin that it can for its size and that stuff. So a similar res or identical resolution goes in front of the school, we'll adopt it and then actually assign the joint power.
I move to approve Resolution 2020-05, a resolution to enter into a joint powers agreement for construction and acquisition of the sewer system, resolution of necessity to borrow by insurance, issuance of promissory note pursuant to SDCL 9-25-12. We have a motion, a second, roll call, Mary.
Hank?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is executive session. A motion to move into executive session.
I move to enter into executive section, central SDCL 1-25-2 subsection 1, personnel at 602.
Second. So, the roll call, the ones who make that.
Excuse me, Hank?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Declare it's out at 6:48 of the executive session. Okay, we'll move on to business item number three, the job description amendment.
Move to approve amending the job description for the Wade Water Supervisor/Operator, Assistant Public Works Director to be an exempt employee.
Second. I have a motion, a second, Mary roll call.
Hank?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Okay, and then business item number four, employees switched to a salary position. I'm going to approve moving Dustin Prehn to a salary position at a rate of $55,000 per year. Second. I have a motion and a second, Mary roll call, please.
Hank?
Aye.
Bert?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Maxwell?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to reports.
No share.
No share tonight, Joel, you're up.
That was something during player up here. The one just broke a good dry. I have plenty of time to get the tree in the hallway there.
You seem sorry.
Oh, you don't have any questions?
Here we go. First one's an easy one. Walsh gave it to me.
All right. So, three updates I wanted to give you all information on. First, the Willow Street Trail. Last year, we had an estimate of the entire project, including construction admin for $1,036,000. We estimated at that time that the TAP grant would cover $661,000 for that. We would pay $375,000, $360,000 for the project and $15,000 for construction admin. We just received an updated cost estimate, which we're using for bidding at $1,242,000. They had $1.2 million as the project, $42,000 is the construction admin. So there's a bump there, basically $200,000. And then the TAP grant has a maximum federal limit of this $463,600, some change dollars here. So. Our. We'd be responsible for $778,000, and that is $403,000 essentially. That will be the difference of what we budgeted and what we could potentially be having to pay. So I wanted to bring this all to your attention. The DOT will be advertising on their website next week and bid letting bid opening is marked out quickly. Speaking with the DOT initiative, we can figure out a way to use our future stiff monies to cover that difference. If need be, they can work with us on that. We get about $200,000 in stiff monies a year.
Correct.
So we could use, use that. So, just wanted to make you all aware, if there's some direction that you want to provide to us, you certainly can do that, but right now, our staff is just continuing on.
How confident are we on the project estimate of the $1.2?
I reviewed the bid item, itemized bid document, all the costs. It's pretty well broken out. There are some things that are a little higher, but I, I don't want to say they're too high, just because the bid environment right now, it's everything's high. Right. So.
So the chance of coming in lower is probably?
I would, I would say it probably, I'd be more inclined to say I'm coming lower versus higher, say that. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it'd be less than a billion dollars to be 1.1, 1.2 is what I, what I'd be optimistic for. So. If it, if it, I should say, if it is over this 1, 2, 4, 2, the DOT would cover 80% of whatever, whatever's over that, and we would pay 20%. So that, that, that match kicks back in again. But at the current bid estimate, this is the maximum federal match that they can provide.
Sure.
So if it is like much over, we're not, we're not out with that much more money, but it's this little, it's the it's the span between this 463 and 1.2 that we're responsible for. But I didn't know what this was going to cost six years ago, for certain months. Well, yeah. And.
I know that's because the DOT and nature of the
Is there an option to reject bid?
I believe we could, well, we would, the DOT would, but we would basically lose any chance of getting grants in the future, wouldn't we? I don't know, they would pull that against us, but. I don't know. I think if the bids came back way high, the DOT would consider our, would strongly consider our, our, how we want to proceed. If it's lower than the estimate, I'm sure the DOT will listen to us in any case, but ultimately, it's their project and their grant money, so.
So what do we normally use the stiff money for?
Roads, anything roads, basically, a lot of times we do, or road additions added to the network.
Is this the, because of our population, is that the stiff?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
What we've used hit for in the past, now it's been Columbia Street, the extension, and now we're using some towards the next extension of that as well.
Okay. So what incoming new roads are we going to be paying for in the future of the block? We got a lot.
But aren't they just desert extent, oh, I don't know.
We just, actually, another part of my presentation, but some major road improvements that we could use that stiff money for is Liffen Willow intersection, any intersection, if we want to build some temporary lights somewhere else. Or if we, any portion of 272nd, maybe up by Dynamic Development or towards the west, past home sites. Those are some major roads that we will need to build in the next five years.
Any reason that the estimate dropped as much as from the 661 to the 463, what happened? Do we know what?
Which is, I guess we we didn't understand, we didn't understand the limit, I guess. The, 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 the TAP grants are generally an 80, 81%, 19% split, where the, where the city pays 19%. But I guess there's this limit that the, the grant will go is this 463 for a project this size. I'm not sure what, why. I'm not sure if we're aware of that, we had never done a project this magnitude using a TAP grant for. So if it was a lower, smaller amount, they would possibly go to that 81, 19 split? Yeah. If. If it was $900,000, that 4, that 463 would probably be about still 463, and we would be, so, $300,000 difference or whatever.
This is a dumb question, maybe, but let's just go off of what our project estimate was at that point. And the 36, it probably wouldn't get us to the high school, but how far would it go if we didn't get it to the high school? How far would that take us from Liberty? I assume that it comes from Liberty, right? So it would be?
It could go, wow.
The current designs go between Liberty and high school.
Yeah. I guess technically the
Originally, it was supposed to go all the way out to Willow, or out to Minnesota.
Right. Yes, technically, the project starts at high school, but it could start either direction, I guess.
If it was like from high school to, say?
It would probably be, yeah, the high school to, yeah, Fairway-ish. A lot of the cost is not trail, it's the, the grading that needs to be done, because they gotta reshape that ditch to get that trail in there.
I'm just curious if we can scale that.
At this point, it'd be pretty difficult. You have to be engineering, have to cut up the, the plans, and that usually takes a lot of effort, more money. But, and with being a DOT-led project, they probably wouldn't want to.
So we would need to use all of our stiff money, but we could use a portion of each year to help pay that off, or?
Yeah, that may have
I did say it took $50,000, spread that out over.
I didn't go out and say, well, what exactly would you negotiate? They just said that they would do a work with us on, on getting covered with used stiff monies, and so. I know that they're, they, they let us, they let us use money in the future for certain projects, and they just, we just don't get that money in the future? Is that how that works sometimes?
We just sold the money for
So, I mean, to me, right now, it sounds like we need to wait to see what the bid's coming at.
Is there any interest or penalty of them doing that?
I'm sorry, what?
Is there any interest or penalty with them doing that? They just basically spend future funds, so essentially they're
They actually tried to do that last year, they were under the understanding that they were just going to keep that amount for the additional thing, and we, they hadn't even did the project, so.
True.
We didn't see our money for a few months after, until I called them, and they said, oh, I thought we were just going to keep it for that future project.
And they released it?
It was like, we've already committed that in this budget for other projects, so we do need that money to, to get us through this, this year, so. So there is that option.
Sure.
What's that number that's shaded, is it 4036138?
Yes. It was bright, right on my ear, so I apologize.
You would just color.
So, I guess with that, I think we'll just continue, I guess, with the bidding, and hopefully it works out, and you can continue with that project. I wanted to update you all on the wastewater facility. Several of you were, I hope two of you were involved with the last CMAR meeting. And I can provide this PowerPoint to you after the meeting. But. I wanted to provide you the, kind of the timeline of how the project estimates have been going. And so this first one is that facility plan, which was in June 2018. And they estimated the entire, the wastewater facility portion of the project to be $17,500,000. At our kickoff meeting in October 2018, the total wastewater facility estimate was 17.1 million. So it, from the facilities plan to the actual kickoff, it was a little bit different, a little bit lower. After the kickoff meeting, that was before we got the CMAR on board. After we got the CMAR on board, we understood that they had some costs that we didn't account for. A CMAR. CMAR basically, they provide a service, so they need to get paid for that. And a lot of that service, part of that service is what we would consider mobilization in a typical project. And so the actual CMAR is about 1.7 million for their services and all their expenses and their profit. And so our wastewater facility project went up to 17 point, or, I'm sorry, 18.7 million at 30% design. At 60% design last fall, October, we were at 18.9 million. In this last meeting in January, we looked at some bid alternates, and bid alternates are they can be considered in the project, or the, the, the bidders will, will consider it. If the entire project is within budget, then we would add those alternates. If our main project is higher than we expected, then we wouldn't take those alternates. So it kind of gives us this cushion to stay within budget. With all the bid alternates, it's at 19.7 million. The bid alternates are about a million, so the entire wastewater project would be at 18.7 million. And so we're about 1.3 million over on the wastewater facility itself, which if you break that down, if you include the bid alternates, we would be 22% over what the facilities plan had indicated. Or, I'm sorry, 22% over what, or SRF loan indicated, which if we take out the bid alternates, we're 15.5% over budget on the wastewater facility itself. Some of that can be attributed to bringing the CMAR on board, just because that's a professional service that we, I guess, we didn't account for. A lot of the other things. The blue is the engineering piece, which is about 3 million. But you see the gray line here, kind of staying about the same. Now, go to the entire project, which includes the force main and the lagoon, lagoon reclamation. Here's our SRF loan. That was at 24, 24 million, 500,000, about. You see the beginning of the project, this is the facilities plan. We're below that, the gray line again is the wastewater project. The blue line, or this purple, and I should come in here before, I was literally working on this until 5:45. This band here is lagoon reclamation. And this band here is the force main. You can see that with the wastewater facility, we got the CMAR come on, kind of trumped some things up, we kind of came out of budget up here. The lagoon reclamation was budgeted at about $2 million. Me and Toby had taken a real close look at that, and we believe that we don't need to have a consultant engineer to be involved with that. I've been involved with BioSolids, and Toby has too, and we believe that we can get that done with, by ourselves and our staff within at least $500,000, I bet. That's really high, I'm thinking we can get it done for much cheaper than that, but just to have some contingency on there, because I haven't done volume calculations, and if we have to determine where that money's, or where that slug's going to go, we're going to put a lot of contingency on there and say $500,000. So we're going to save 1.5 million there. The force main. We recently got bids in that were very favorable. We haven't identified the lowest bidder, but they were all 500,000 below bid, we had several close, a couple of close to a million below our, our bid estimate. So we save, we're saving approximately a million dollars there also. So, at, at the end of the day, even with our bid alternates, this little box here, we're going to stay below our SRF loan. So we have a potential to get everything we ever wanted, but still stay within budget. So, there's a lot of little numbers with this and all that, and I can provide that to you all. I can definitely provide these PowerPoint sheets to you, because they're kind of neat and they kind of tell the story. So. Yeah, I wanted you all to understand where we're at. Yes, the wastewater facility budget itself is a little high. But overall, the SRF loan is within budget. Do you have any questions or comments on that?
Just appreciate the perspective and the detail that's gone into being able to present this, so, thank you.
Pulling my hair out.
Okay. From you, then, there must be a lot of sweat cheese.
Okay. The roads update. So I was going to present to the county commission today, they had to postpone that, so I'll be presenting in two weeks. And so a lot of that, this stuff you've kind of already been familiar with, our, our road condition assessment, our traffic studies and all that. So I don't want to rehash that out after I present to the county, I'll present it to you all, just so you know what, what I presented. We did recently have a meeting with developers on a street plating fee structure that went pretty well. There's a lot of discussion. And so we're going to bring that to the planning and zoning board this week or next week for discussion again, and then I think in the next month, we will bring it to you all on what we decide, but we're working towards that. One of the big things that I'm going to present to the county that I wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page is, I got a concept plan from IDG, who's doing our 30% design of Liffen Willow. And they provided this one, this is a typical signal, signalized intersection, just a concept plan, there's not a lot of detail in it. This is essentially five or six or seven lanes in each direction, a ton of right away. Be about $3 million, give or take. Now, I'm told that the reason why it needs to be so big is because we have a lot of semi-truck traffic, and a lot of those lanes aren't actually used, they're just, they just need that extra room. There's a lot of right away. And when traffic engineers design intersections, they, they design out for 20 or 25 years. And so for a typical signalized intersection, a lot of it's not going to be used for 10 years at least, it's just going to be this huge thing out there. Yeah, a little different than o, o, other utilities. And we also received a roundabout concept. That's about 1.7 million. A little smaller footprint, you kind of see the, had to zoom way out to get it all on the intersection, this one is a much smaller footprint. With a roundabout, we kind of would need this layout in three to five years anyway, and it, it's good for another 25 years. So we're overbuilding on the intersection, and we won't be using it all for 10 years. This one, we kind of need it right away, and it's that dual lane roundabout, see that extra outside lane. There's actually a little less right away, surprisingly. And it's considerably cheaper. The bigger, one of the bigger issues is the, during construction, this entire intersection would need to be shut down while it's constructed versus what they're typical. You can do part of it, open it, and you can figure out ways to get traffic through. But the roundabout, whole thing needs to be shut down until it's completed, so it's really a big string for those four or six months or whatever. So this is what I'm going to be bringing to the county, showing the, these options, what we're working towards. Again, it's just a concept, but it's kind of the direction we're going. We did, we were, when we started, we were going to do a rural type ditches versus urban ditches, or urban curbs and all the other stuff. We just don't have any group, we keep it rural with the ditches, it's just going to have to be urban, it's longer, we have to be curves and everything. We just don't have any right away.
Joe, it might be too early to have this question, but looking at this, which one is more friendly to bike path, what we just talked about?
Both one would take up a little bit of that bike path. The roundabout would take up more, and you can kind of see that the actual crossings are further away, so we'd have to construct an additional sidewalk to get up there.
Joe, just information in general about pedestrian friendliness, so roundabout versus traditional intersection?
Generally, a typical intersection is a little more pedestrian friendly, because you have a full stop. Signals, yeah, people are actually stopping. Signals, yeah, people are actually stopping versus. Here, they they try to bring the pedestrians further away from the intersection. And then they, you can see they try to curve the approach. And that's meant to slow drivers as they approach it. They can't see exactly where they're going. They're gonna slow down even more. And that's supposed to help with the. Pedestrian crossing. There'll also be a a stop, uh an area in the middle of the median where pedestrians can stop if they need to. Generally, a a intersection. Can be. Safer than than a roundabout for pedestrians.
Right here, the pedestrian is only required to cross two lanes of traffic at a at a time, I guess.
Two, well, uh two or four, yeah.
Whereas the traditional intersection, there is an island that.
Not much. No, they wouldn't have an island, but the traffic is always stopping, so.
Yeah, yeah. And just like about the traffic going earlier. Yes, we want good roads in the city and everything else, but we also want to make sure the kids are safe.
I would think that in our in our setting here, we're. A lower speed, you know. With tighter right away, um you drivers are gonna feel uh more be closed. I would hope that they're a little more alert, all that.
Is there a percentage efficiency gain to the round- roundabout versus the signalized intersection? Thirty to forty percent more efficient or?
As far as like. Oh, traffic flow? I'm not sure. Well, this would. Either these scenarios would provide the same technical type of efficiency that they created on A B C. And it's on wait times as you flow through, and both of these would provide about the same. Kind of depends on. I I can ask about more exact on how traffic would would flow through either, because. I mean, obviously with the signalizer, you're stopping, there's gonna be platooning versus here, it's kind of more. Flow, and when you have heavy traffic coming from one or two directions, it kind of a affects the entire circle. Should also mention that we would have to do a two lane roundabout, which would be the first one in South Dakota. So there'd be additional public outreach before we construct this if we go that way, because. They're not as simple as a single lane, I guess, so people just need to learn how to misuse those.
Joe, has there this. They talked about the impact of, say, all the way down at Honeysuckle and Willow. Under the roundabout, the more continuous flow of a roundabout, say, make it easier or harder to. Get out, get those uncontrolled intersections further down.
Well, I didn't, I didn't go into that. I guess intuitively you would say that when you have a signalized intersection, you have more of that platooning. So you're gonna have those breaks, right? Versus a roundabout, you're just more continuous traffic. So when you're near this intersection and a roundabout, I would I would suspect that. You want to get in and out of some of these approaches, it's gonna be a little more difficult. Think further towards like honeysuckle, it wouldn't be, you wouldn't notice as much because you get a little more distance. But near the intersection, you're not gonna have those breaks.
I think that's certainly a concern for. My area, you know, the our part of the ward too is that that flow of traffic trying to. For anyone who's trying to get off of honeysuckle or even sheeple for that matter. Wanting to go west, I think that's. I think that's always been a big thing, and then just the the safety of the the kids and stuff too, who maybe want to ride their bike the fairway and grab. You know, you know, something for. Just because of the the way that our city's built right now, I don't, I don't know if that's as big of an issue for people who live on the. The east side town, but I think they they definitely think on the west side, you know, anyone living west of Cleveland. I think, I don't know, that's my thought is that there's gonna be to get over to that side. Certainly, I can see that, but there would be some concerns from the public if they think on that one.
I think. Either route would go. If folks living in in Green Meadows here, they come up Sheville, they could certainly come through the roundabout, kind of slingshot back, you know, and go back west. Or they can go from honeysuckle up here, and with a continuous flow, you're not gonna be waiting as long, and perhaps those folks. Wouldn't try to battle at Sheville. They would just go to honeysuckle, knowing that they're gonna flow more easily through this intersection, either way, you know? This one too.
I never thought about that, so.
Sheville, you'll you'll, if you want to go left, you very well can turn right. Come and run through the roundabout and come right back.
So you you make the uh a change in traffic patterns?
That uh that might actually solve some people's concerns about the right in, right out, only intersections that we're proposing.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you have the entrance and the V P there, that would be a truck and also.
Yeah, cases here, they would never be able to turn left. They would have to go through the intersection.
So like Sanford too, we, you know, they they're asking for a a entrance somewhere in here. We told them in the future, it'll have to be right in, right out, probably. Having a roundabout there to go into, then. We need some all of those right in, right out concerns nearby.
I'm not sure here, I mean, you could maybe do allowing U turns. I'm not sure exactly what the rules are with that, but you may.
Usually, like I drive on, I drive into twelve street and I always do a U turn at. Twelve and Marion, just understood on rather on green arrow.
There's some spots in Rapid City where they absolutely promote U turns. And the lights are just timed just right to allow quite a few U turns again because of.
That's the same way that they have with twelve and Marion, because it's all.
Basically downtown is a bunch of one ways, you know, everywhere.
In the divided highway, so you can't turn left, right?
So it ultimately decides when the county decides which ones they'd be willing to work with us on?
Yeah, I think the ball is still kind of in their court, but. There's a direction that the city wants to go. It certainly would like that feedback before I go to the county, so.
Are you able to provide us with this?
Yeah, I guess these these two.
Any thought in funding for this? I'm like, what that split would be or you don't know yet?
No, I guess we've made our proposals before the county, you know, that. You know, one fourth of this intersection belongs to us, look at me south. We also said that we participate in more urban elements, AKA the curb gutter, drainage and sidewalk. So we proposed that we would always participate or fully fund those those elements of it. I my gut rate or my my guess would be that they're gonna say you pick and you're gonna find that amount from us for part.
Okay. All right. Yeah, that's about all I had. I just wanted to touch on one thing that I went to the Spurs Hill Conference in Las Vegas, and it was a very good conference. It's not just uh learning about new things. They actually, they start, they have first days, a lot of classes on, starting from the beginning. Uh newcomers to the field, and that was great, and then a lot of networking and stuff. There's a lot of engineers, a lot of guys working out in the field. Uh a lot of asphalt chemists, like just all kinds of guys and gals. And one thing that they all, one guy gave a presentation that they just thought was hilarious. This is your typical pavement quality versus time curve. If you don't do anything, your pavement's gonna degrade. And it degrades faster towards the end of the life cycle. The presenter says it's kind of like a marriage. Towards the beginning, you know, you could buy your wife roses here is pretty cheap, right? You just buy her roses every few years, really keeps that pavement. Eventually, you know, you might have to take her on vacation, go go with the in-laws or something out here. Buy a sports car out here, you know? So I mean, a lot of those guys, they can really relate to that, I guess. They just thought it was the greatest thing. So yeah, buying roses up here really does does wonders, I guess. So just leave it at that. Anything else? That's all I got.
Thanks, Joe. Andrew, anything else for you?
No, sir.